Meeting of the Howard's Planning Board to order at 6:30 on April 10, 2018.
And Ellen's coming in.
And. As required by law, the town may audio or video record this meeting. Any person intending to either audio or video record this open meeting is required to inform the chair. The first item on the agenda, we're going to rehear PB 2017-33, Stephen D. and Nancy Morris, owners, care of Dan Speakman, representing them. We heard this two weeks ago, and it was, not everybody was identified as that, not everybody.
You actually heard it about two months ago, believe it or not, it seems like two weeks ago, but notification to Butters was not properly made, so we've redone the whole hearing and started from scratch.
Okay, well, start from scratch. Yep. The application with waivers seeks approval of a use special permit for detached accessory apartment pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, section 325-51H and Article 5 Use Regulation. The proposal seeks to construct a 725 square foot one-bedroom dwelling unit and a single bay garage. Property is located at 11 Oliver Snow Road, map 24 parcel B3-A in the RR zoning district, being read advertised and reheared due to the fact that the Butters were not properly notified of the initial hearing. Mr. Speakman.
And just a reminder that we do have a member on the phone.
Yes.
So all votes have to be roll call.
So we're back again. I'm Dan Speakman. Nancy Morris with me here.
Good to see you again.
The first one was like a dress rehearsal. Sorry about that.
You've got it downright now.
Tell that one.
That was a good one.
This is to tell everybody else here that.
Yeah.
Give them experience, and they won't have to do it twice.
Let everybody else in on what we're doing here.
Go ahead and tell it.
I'm sorry about that.
Can I just ask, do we have all the green cards?
We have everything we need, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I think everything is in order here tonight, and you have all the white slips that have got the green cards, anything that you want to need. I think everything is order, in order. If you have any questions, I mean, I don't need to go through any kind of a spiel, you already heard it, so if you have any questions or...
Just give us just a quick briefing for the record since we are rehearing it.
I'll just read you the narrative that we filed. Okay, so the locus is a 1.4 acre parcel of upland located at the southerly corner of intersection of Gorham Road and Oliver Snow Road. It is Oliver Snow Road as shown on assessor's map 24 parcel B3A. It presently features a three-bedroom ranch-style home with drive-in garage, covering a net 1,764 square feet as the principal structure, which is occupied by the owner of the property. We are requesting to construct an 814 square foot one-bedroom accessory apartment, remote from the principal structure as shown on the accompanying site plan by Dan A. Speaking of Construction and Building Plans by Red Barn Architecture. This petition conforms to all pertinent zoning regulations as stipulated in section 325-51H of the Howard zoning regulations and with the requirements of zoning compliance table C. We're providing one additional parking space for accessory apartment. We hereby request administrative waivers of any and all commercial or residential requirements of the bylaw that are not applicable to this petition.
Listen, you missed the last one because you missed the flight, right?
Oh, no, no, she was here.
Oh, you were here?
She's here.
Yeah.
Okay. Charlie?
The only comments from other staff members, there's the Health Department, which they are already aware of, there will be additional review and permits required. They will need a septic permit to expand the leaching and add another tank as proposed. I've reviewed the application. I think the administrative and filing requirements have been met. Staff recommends the requested waivers and recommended condition that the full basement below the apartment, this area should not be used for anything but storage. No habitable space should be created in the basement.
Okay, that's it?
That's all I have.
Okay, do we have any questions from members of the board?
I have none.
Hearing none. Are there any questions from the public?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Been moved?
Second.
And seconded by Ellen. Close public hearing. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. We'll take a roll call vote. First, David from Florida.
Aye.
Jim.
Aye.
Joe.
Aye.
Mary.
Aye.
Ellen.
Aye.
And I'm aye. Meeting is closed. Joe?
Moved to approve waivers and/or modifications from commercial and residential requirements of the rules and regulations, as the requirements for submittal are not pertinent to residential structure, i.e., landscape plans, et cetera.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Okay, any discussion? All in favor? David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Aye for me, it's unanimous. Joe?
Moved to approve the findings of fact as follows. One, the parcel is in the RR zoning district. Two, the apartment unit is not greater than 900 square feet, being 725 plus or minus square feet. Three, it is the owner's intent to continue to reside and occupy the main dwelling on the property. Four, minimum requirements have been met for setbacks, area, and bulk. Five, the driveway and garage will provide sufficient off-street parking, which meets the minimum requirements. Six, the application as submitted does not adversely affect local traffic or create traffic hazards, 325-51H2.
Been moved?
Second.
Seconded by Ellen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
I vote aye, it's unanimous.
To approve with conditions, the use special permit and waivers pursuant to 400-6 waiver of rules and regulations, requested for the attached accessory apartment based on the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the code of the town of Howard with the above findings and the following conditions. One, the owner shall maintain occupancy in one of the units as required by the town code. Two, the basement shall not be used or improved for habitable living space. Three, the approval shall be conditioned to the Board of Health requirement for septic system permit to expand leaching and add another septic tank as proposed. Four, the special permit decision shall be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Five, any changes to the plan shall be subject to further planning board review.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McAllen and seconded by Ellen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That is unanimous. Congratulations. You had a good practice run.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you. Good luck. Next item on the agenda, the fire sale, is item B, PB 2018-09, the town of Howard, care of David McKinley, Castle Booze Associates, seeks approval of site plan review special permit with waivers and site improvements and a use special permit for a structure greater than 7,500 square feet for construction of a new fire station pursuant to the code of the town of Howard, section 325-51 and 55. The property is located on 149 Route 137, map 87 parcel J1 in the CH2 zoning district. Mr. McKinley.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a member of the East Howard Fire Station Building Committee, and therefore I have to recruit myself.
Okay.
Good evening, board. My name's Dave McKinley. I'm a registered landscape architect in the state of Massachusetts. I work for a company called Castle Booze, who's been hired by the town to design the new station. I'm here, Todd Costa, the project architect, Nathan Ketchel, civil engineer from Garcia Gluskin de Souza, and members of the fire corps. I think you know your, probably know your fire chief. I'd like to go through the site plan, or show the proposed changes. After that, I'll have Todd show you some of the perspectives on the site, and then if you feel so desire, we'll go, we have a civil plan showing drainage and some of the utilities on the site. Pretty quickly, the site is 0.21 acres. The existing fire station, remind you.
You aren't going to have to use.
Plenty of room up front.
The existing fire station is up here on the northwest corner, and it's going out onto Route 138. That is going to remain in operation? 137, sorry. 138 is where I live. That will remain in operation while we build the new fire station aiming out onto Route 39. The fires, the new fire station is about 9,500 feet, in square, square feet, in terms of size. We have an apron going out here, there's three curb cuts, although this is a large curb cut. The curb cut farthest to the west is for the visitor parking. This will be nine spaces. All of the staff and officers will park in the back to the northeast of the site here, and the apron will come basically right through the middle here. There is a small little plaza in the front for a flagpole, so a monument, and then in the back, we've got some basically utilities. We are going to reconnect for the, an access for the cell tower control area, or basically I could say is utility area, that's being regraded, but we're really not touching that. Cell tower doesn't get touched. In terms of what we're going to do here on the street is we're going to reconnect the sidewalk. We're going to keep it low so that we can keep the curb cut there, because we don't really know what the town wants to use this site for when it's done. The building will be demolished, foundations taken out, utilities, and basically we'll turn that back here, this back to lawn. We're going to try to, you know, you can see in terms of landscaping, we've tried to make it pretty simple. Most of it is screening with some decorative landscaping in the front. As part of an alternate on the project is the sidewalk here along Route 39 to the west to connect to an existing sidewalk that's there now, but we're planning on stopping it here to get to the entrance to the, to the building. Other than that, that's pretty much the project. I'll let Todd show you the, some of the perspectives, you get an idea of what the materials and the look of the building are. Thank you, David. Just trying not to topple. So, as you can see here, on the Route 39 side of the station, basically both directions, the bank being off to the, your right-hand side of the page here, we tried to basically make the fire station fit into the environment. We have a stone base that's to help with protecting the lower portion of the building for some of the rougher areas, and then bringing on top of that just a fiber cement siding clapboard with basic white PVC trim painted, and then two-tone, you know, the apparatus bay is the larger structure here, being the red tone, and then a more natural sand tone on the other area. Also trying to help kind of break the building up and bringing that smaller structure that's, that's support spaces to the apparatus bay into that sand tone as well. This is your main entry point here with the visitor parking off to the left-hand side of it. As David had mentioned, the flagpole and the apron for the trucks to basically respond directly out to 39 or from the rear of the building. So the first, first line would come out the front, second line out the back, or allows the department to use it as a drive-through bay.
Thank you, Todd. Again, my name is Nathan Ketchel. I am a civil engineer with Garcia Gluskin de Souza. On the site, we've, we filled it up with utilities. I guess we'll start with stormwater. There are a series of catch basins, one down at the northeast corner, two in the back parking lot, and one in the visitor lot that will capture stormwater, provide pretreatment for total suspended solids prior to discharging to underground leaching chambers, which consist of precast eight-foot diameter structures. The two systems, the one in the apron and the one in the, actually in the front apron and in the rear apron, are in a larger gravel bed. The four leaching pits over in the visitor parking lot do just have a radial gravel jacket around it consisting of four feet of stone. Basically, the system is designed to retain up to and through the 25-year storm, on the 100-year storm. This system stays within its boundaries. However, we do end up with some runoff that does come off onto Route 39 and heads in a northerly direction with the peak flows and volumes at a reduction from the existing condition. We have a new water service being brought onto the site that would be phased as an early item due to the fact that the existing fire station's water service does run through the wooded area or under the driveway at this time. So the, the infrastructure for the new water, which will consist of a new eight-inch service coming onto the site, replacement fire hydrant to the one that needs to be removed due to the location of the driveway, and then a second training hydrant on the west side of the property in the rear for training purposes is proposed, and in the meantime also reconnecting the existing station to that new service while the construction of the new station is going on. Obviously, there's also a series of light poles that are being added onto the site. I believe a photometric plan was included in the planning submission. I believe they're 20-foot tall fixtures, LED, I believe they are completely programmable. We also are proposing, and I actually have to go over to the Board of Health hearing in a couple of minutes to discuss this, I believe in 2021, the town right now is proposing to install a municipal sewer. So I believe this project is complete in mid-2019. So for that, for that time period between mid-2019 to 2021, when the sewer is in, we're proposing to reconnect to the existing septic system up at the existing fire station until that time when the sewer is in, when it will be connected to it. But in the meantime, because it would be connected to a septic system, we are proposing a holding tank for the apparatus area garage floor drains as well as the mechanical room floor drains. It would be a double-wall tank with interstitial monitoring as well as an alarm at, I believe it's at two-thirds fall of the tank, so that the fire department is aware that they are approaching a time when they need to have the tank pumped. To be able to connect the new building to the existing septic system, we do have a small six-by-six inside diam, or not diameter, six-by-six square pump chamber. So it would be a duplex system that is monitored during the time of its use. There is a proposal to include a generator, I believe it's 175 kilowatt, natural gas-powered. So there's no diesel stored on-site for that purpose. That's essentially the utility system. So there will be a fire protection sprinkler system onto the, into the building as well as a fire department connection adjacent to where the fire service comes in and within 100 feet of the fire hydrant.
Any questions?
Any fuel stored on the premises for any of the vehicles, or no? I think not part of the, not part of the.
No, they fill up at the DPW.
Okay.
Any other question? Mary?
I thought I had heard their drive-through bays, so I'm assuming that all the access and egress is directly on 39?
Yes.
So, so your trucks are going to come in on the far right-hand side with the ability to make that, that turn into each of the three bays?
Correct.
Now, what about the, the vehicles that are parked in that back parking lot? How are they going to get out of that back parking lot? Do they, is there ability to come around, or do they come through the same, the same entry?
They would come through the same entry. Those are, are, sort of, those are the firefighters' personal vehicles, so that's when they report to shift, shift change, callbacks, anything of that nature. They would basically be coming into that back parking lot and parking back there. The road is 24 feet wide, so.
So it is big enough for, to meet a fire truck and come back and forth? The only other question I had was relative to your, to the use of the existing septic. So existing septic being in the back of the building, do we know where the, where the sewer would be laid? Are we looking at, at having to reverse pipes later on when we tie into sewer?
No, well, what would happen is it would come from Route 1, from Route 39. The thought process at this point is, and we, we added a sewer manhole structure from the garage floor drains at this location so that from here, this can pivot just outside of where the visitor parking lot will be. With the lift station right there, it would be a matter of the lift station either being decommissioned and left in place or removed, and extending the six-inch discharge to Y into the line that's coming from the sewer manhole, and then running parallel with the visitor parking lot down to Route 39.
Makes sense, thank you.
Nathan, we hear a lot about, go ahead, David, do you have a question?
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead.
Is there an accessory traffic light to be installed to stop westbound traffic before it gets to the entrance, the exit from the station? So in emergency, they will not be held up by traffic to stop for a light right in front of the station?
No, no, no traffic light has, has been considered for over there. Our normal operating premises that we try and design to is not add in temporary traffic lights that would disrupt the normal traffic flow. You know, most people are trained to respond to emergency vehicles and get it basically out of the way.
Could, could, could they put in a traffic signal override? They use those in Boston.
The, I believe.
Can I comment on that, Mr. Chairman, please?
Please, go right ahead.
The intersection at 30, 137 and 39 has the optocom system. Our trucks will trip that light as soon as they make the corner.
Okay.
Also to fill in that, I believe our electrical engineers did provide a spare conduit into the landscape area in case the town did ever want to put in a light.
That answer that, David?
Yeah, I just understand all of it, especially there's too much traffic on the right.
I, I think they've got the problem solved.
They already have control of the lights at 137 and 39, David. We're having trouble hearing you, David.
What is the, the other question I have is, you raised the question of building height. It looks like the building's about 34 feet above, right there. I assume there's no problem, is that I'm right, Charlie?
That is correct, yes. The building commissioner looked into that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I guess, Nathan, my, my last question, we hear a lot about the carcinogens that firefighters face with their equipment and with the fire truck, with their personal equipment. When they washed out, I assume they washed out in the firehouse, when they washed out, where does the residual go? It's not nice stuff.
That's an excellent question.
It's a great question.
You make a good point. We work on this technology all the time. Currently, we have the ability to wash dirty, really heavy, dirty soot-ed firefighters at the scene of the fire. We have the ability to do that. We have special cleaning materials that we now use, and when we get back to the station, there may be some residual. We plan to have special washer and dryers for the turnout gear, but if there is any residual soot or anything, it would go into the septic system.
Yeah, the reason I ask is because a very good friend of mine was a fire chief in Boston and died of that very thing, and so in Boston, they now have, from what I understand, they've got washes and dryers in every firehouse to clean the equipment, as clean as they can make it.
We have a system now at the main station, but we plan to add one at Station 2.
Okay, good, thank you. Thank you, Nathan. Is there no other, any questions from the public? Well, you've answered all their questions. Good luck on the next one.
Thank you.
Wait, do you want me? Do you want me to?
Yeah, go right ahead. Your next on the agenda.
Let's see. A number of waivers have been requested, and we've gone through each of these. I would like to say that the applicant, Castle Booze, has worked very closely with town staff from start to finish with the Station 2 committee. I'm actually an ad hoc member, I'm not a real member, but I served as staff for them if they had questions regarding different issues, and I would help guide them through the process. They met at least twice with the community development group and then individual community development staff folks, so there's been a lot of review on this particular project. They do ask for a number of different waivers. I think they are all reasonable. I'm not going to run through each one of them.
Okay.
But I think they are all very reasonable. There is a lengthy comment from the Health Department. Basically, it's that they need permission from the Board of Health to be able to tie into the existing septic system that is there with a couple of components added until such time as the sewer goes by, and when that happens, they would tie into the sewer. So as was mentioned by Nathan, he probably already just did run next door to that meeting with regard to the building and the height. David brought that up. There is a provision in the zoning bylaw, section 325-19, that allows for municipal uses and essential use structures to exceed the 30 feet, provided they meet a certain standard, and they have met that standard. Our town engineer has reviewed the proposed stormwater. He is pleased with what has been designed and feels that it will comply with the necessary requirements, not only of the town but of the MS4 requirements that are, are coming forward. Now I'm jumping down to my stuff. The application does appear to meet all the necessary bylaws and rules and regulations with the exception of two very minor things, which are very minor, I don't think they are issues. The building elevations don't actually show the building height, the cross-sections, we didn't get a comparable, but we do have the height based on the site plan, so I'm not overly concerned about that. And another minor thing, the color of the surface was not provided. We have a beautiful rendering that gives us what those colors are.
Chartreuse, is it?
Chartreuse, yes, no. And that really is all that I have for comments. I think that they've done a very thorough job on this application, on the plans, and at this time, that's all I'm going to say.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? Maybe we should close the public hearing.
Moved to close the public hearing.
Second.
Been moved by Mary and seconded by Ellen to close the public hearing. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Roll call.
Oh, David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
That's unanimous, I vote aye.
So moved to approve the following waivers pursuant to section 400-6 as requested based on the facts presented by the applicant. First, that six copies of the hydrogeologic impacts event. Two, detailed parking calculations table on the existing. Two, detailed parking calculations table on the existing conditions plan. Three, names and addresses of owners of record and property deed and plan references on all plans except the existing conditions plan where this information is provided. Four, names of all direct abutters on all plans except the existing conditions plan where names are provided, and for the deed and plan references for all direct abutters on all plans. Five, graphic scale on the existing conditions plan. Six, providing the total area in square feet for the parcel on the site layout plan. Seven, requirement to provide a loading area pursuant to section three twenty-five dash forty of the Town of Harwich code. Eight, existing driveways within one hundred feet of the site on the existing conditions plan and the site layout plan. Nine, stopping site distances for all vertical curves on all plans. Ten, traffic circulation arrows. And eleven, WRPD requirements, complete lists of type and quantity, quantities of all chemicals, et cetera, to be stored, used, and disposed of on-site, description of how and where, uh, they are to be stored, et cetera.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to vote on the waivers. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
I, I also vote aye. That would be unanimous.
So finally, uh, move to adopt the following findings of fact. One, the proposed facility is within the CH dash two and WR districts. Two, the site currently houses the existing Station Two facility, including the main curb cut and parking areas located off Route one thirty-seven, which will be utilized during the construction of the new Station Two facility. Three, Route thirty-nine provides for adequate access for proposed new location of fire station two. Four, the curb cut off Route thirty, one thirty-seven would no longer be utilized for fire department use. Five, the access as proposed meets the minimum standards of the zoning code. Six, the plan provides for efficient and safe disposal of surface water. Seven, the use is consistent with the zoning code and will not adversely affect the neighborhood or overall public good. Eight, with adequate and appropriate signage, there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Nine, the waivers requested do not substantially derogate from the purpose and intent of the bylaw. And ten, the site is an appropriate location for such use as the existing fire station two is already located on the site.
Second.
It's been, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
Aye, it is carried unanimously.
And finally, uh, move to, uh, approve with conditions, uh, the site plan review special permit, case number PB two zero one eight dash zero nine, Town of Harwich, a site plan review special permit with waivers and site improvements, and a use special permit for a structure greater than seven thousand five hundred square feet for construction of a new fire station pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-one and fifty-five. The property is located at one forty-nine, Route one thirty-seven, map eighty-seven, parcel J one, in the C dash H dash two zoning district. The decision is based on the aforementioned findings of fact and the fact that the application meets the necessary requirements and criteria for approval pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich and the following conditions. One, the special permit shall comply with all Board of Health requirements and reviews. Two, all signage must conform to the zoning code. Three, any changes to lighting shall conform to the zoning code. And four, any changes to the site plan shall be subject to further planning board review and approval.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
High vote aye, it's unanimous. And finally?
Actually, the finally is not needed 'cause it was motioned in the previous motion.
Okay.
So we're good?
Oh, was, okay, so we're good?
It was a twofer.
Okay.
So we're good?
We're good.
We're good?
Okay.
That's tough, your fire sale is over. Thank you.
It's a handwritten prior motion.
Cut and paste.
Okay.
Yeah, it was, it was in the first one.
They were great to work with.
The next item on the agenda is, oh, you know, did we close the public hearing?
No, it's not a public hearing.
No, no, for the previous item.
We did.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yep, you closed that at seven o'clock.
Good. Public meeting. New business, item A, PB two thousand eighteen dash eleven. Taylor Powell, EVA Perks, as applicant. Five forty-five Main Street Realty Trust as owner, seeks approval of a waiver of site plan for exterior expansion of the restaurant, fast food takeout use. The property is located at five forty-five, Route twenty-eight, map fourteen, parcel U eight, in the CV zoning district. The application is pursuant to the Code of the Town of Harwich, section three twenty-five dash fifty-five F. Counselor?
Yes, thank you very much, Chair, and members of the board, Attorney Matt Fitzsimmons, and I represent Taylor Powell and Perks Cafe, uh, this evening, and, and Mr. Powell appreciates, uh, all the work of the administrator too in, in getting this on the docket prior to the season. The petition that's before the board this evening, uh, in, in the form of a request for waiver of, of, uh, site plan is, is a modification, really, of the layout of the exterior of the, uh, property. On the eastern side of the building is a garden area and patio. And, um, in this modification, there's no change as far as the exterior seating. It still remains the same, uh, same count throughout. Just a modification of the layout, uh, a, a small deck, some other minor modifications, but the full, full plan has been, uh, has been submitted, are, of course, no further changes to it. The ABCC has approved, uh, the license once again, and has been issued for the year. And that's included with the board's packet. And as far as, uh, the use of the space, uh, there's no direct food service to the exterior, so that does, also remains unchanged from, uh, prior approvals from, from this authority and others with the town municipality. And so, um, currently, my clients are simply asking for approval of this modified layout.
I thought it was a waiver of a site plan.
Pardon me?
Thought you were here for a waiver of a site plan.
Correct, correct, yeah. So just approve, approval to move forward as a, as a waiver, yeah.
Okay, um, Charlene?
Okay, um, I actually think Attorney, uh, Fitzsimmons, uh, gave a, a pretty good overview of where we've been, but I'll give a little bit more. Back in two thousand and eight, the planning board granted a waiver of site plan to allow for the conversion of the first floor, um, residence to a retail space. And then in, uh, that was in April, and in May of two thousand and eight, the zoning board appeals granted a special permit to allow for the use of a coffee shop, classified as, uh, restaurant, fast food, takeout. In June of two thousand and twelve, the planning board granted a waiver of site plan to expand the existing fast food takeout use, the expansion of exterior space for convenient seating in a recently created outdoor patio area. And that was granted pursuant to, um, section, uh, two twenty-five, uh, fifty-five F. And I did provide to you, um, a copy of what that plan looked like that was submitted in twelve, and it is up on the board right now. Over the past, uh, few years, there have been some expansions and changes of the exterior space, including an outdoor, um, bar and beer garden area. So, um, over the past couple of years, this has come up at various stages, um, with the licensing board and, and other entities in town, and it was realized that we did not have the most recent layout of the property and what the exterior space of the property looks like. So, uh, the applicant did submit, these are rotated a little bit differently, um, did submit, um, a revised, uh, site plan. Um, they did receive a, uh, license from the, uh, Board of Selectmen, on February twenty-sixth of this year, and that was contingent upon them applying to the planning board and, uh, getting the necessary approvals from the Building Department within ninety days. That has been done. They have since also received approval from the ABCC. The, uh, Selectmen's office is awaiting the board's decision tonight in order to release that, uh, license to the applicant. We did meet with Mr. Powell on various occasions to go over what he needed to do for this. I, I would, uh, indicate also that the exterior seating is for seasonal convenience seating only. There is no direct food or beverage services to these tables. Everything, if you get, want food, you have to go inside and get it in there, um, and so, so on and so forth. I would mention that the alcohol and outdoor entertainment fall completely under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen through licensing. It's really nothing to do with this board, but because of the changes in the site plan, that's what triggered this. Because this was, um, uh, filed when it was, we weren't able to get everybody's comments from the various boards and committees in time to include in your packet. I have since received those, and, and I'd like to read those into the record, if I can find them. Uh, police department, uh, from Lieutenant Kevin Considine, I've reviewed the plan given to us by Elaine, and we have no comments. From the Building Department, the bar expansion does, will require a building permit, so that will need to be applied for, um, uh, for the Building Department. With regard to the, uh, Selectmen and licensing, uh, this is from Christopher Clark. The Board of Selectmen approved the application for an outside bar at their meeting on February twenty-sixth, two thousand and eighteen. We did receive comment from the Fire Department, they had no concerns. And with regard to the Health Department, um, which a copy of this was sent to, um, Mr. Powell, this is from Megan Eldridge, the Health Director. I have reviewed the application for a special permit for exterior expansion of, expansion of the restaurant, fast food, takeout use. Perks currently holds a seasonal food service license with various restrictions. Due to the limited size of the septic system, conditions are as followed. For food service, thirty-three seats. Takeout service only, no interior seats, weather dependent. Open-air bistro, convenience seating only, no table service. Paper service only, no glassware, china, or reusable utensils. And establishment closed with water shut off from September fifteenth through May first. The restrictions are a culmination of compromises as a result of the conversion of the retail shop to the food service establishment over the past, last ten years. Over time, the property grew from a tea shop with limited food preparation into a restaurant with an outdoor bar, full liquor license, and a full menu of various types of food. The Board of He- Health allowed the outdoor seating up to thirty-three exterior seats in two thousand and twelve, when the proposal for the seasonal beer and wine license was before them. An offset seating plan requested by the owner to allow the outdoor seats instead of having seats inside. This was requ- this request was approved in conjunction with other conditions. The outdoor bar is not to be used for food service, but must be ordered inside the building, and the patron is to pick up from the counter and bring it outside. If you have any, uh, please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. I would note on the site plan that they actually are showing thirty-four seats. So, uh, one seat would have to be removed. I would presume it would probably be from the seats at the bar. There's ten seats there, that would have to be reduced to nine. And that could be part of the board's decision if they saw fit to approve the waiver this evening.
Okay. Good, you had, want to add something?
Just, just one, uh, question of the thirty-three or thirty-four? Because I asked my client that very question because it, the ABCC's record happened to have thirty-four, and the Board of Health has thirty-three. It's, again, one, one-seat difference. Goal certainly would be to have it be uniform across all the various permits at some point. There seems to be a discrepancy between it. We weren't able to get the, just because I actually had picked up on it when, when looking at, looking at this as well. So it was a question that I asked of, of my client too, and he said thirty-four has been, what, has been operated, um, historically? And so it's just a question of whether it's one department with the Board of Health that it was thirty.
In, in my, in my opinion?
Is your, but, but in two thousand and twelve, yeah, right.
It would be the Board of Health that trumps, so it's gonna be thirty-three seats.
Okay, that's fine, and we'll check, and so separately, he'll check just with the Board of Health just to see if it was something that, um, uh, in their records, if, if it could be revised to thirty-four. If not, then thirty-three it is, yeah.
Okay. Mary, you have a question?
I just wanted to clarify that the site plan that we're seeing today currently is what is referenced on the liquor license that's before ABCC.
Correct.
And it's been, and it's past ABCC at this point?
Yes.
So we're just waiting to release it?
Yes.
Okay.
Joe? I just wanna indicate that I'm adamantly opposed to any waiver, that, uh, these folks should be required to file a plan. If you haven't physically, uh, been to these premises, you certainly have followed, uh, what's going on with these folks and their neighbors. And, uh, it started out as a coffee shop, is now a, uh, full-blown bar. There's no question about it, I don't think they deny that. And, uh, and they're within the rules and regulations in terms of the permits that they use. I, I, I also have a question. As you face the struc- as you face the, uh, premises, to the left, there's a house. Now.
An old, an old inn.
An old inn, yeah.
Yeah.
Does, is, does your client own that now?
No.
And, and what's going on with that right now?
My own view of the property is that it is in, in disrepair in many regard, or at least some of it.
Somebody's tearing the front stairs off.
But I don't know, but I don't know anything beyond who the owner is or developer.
The porch collapsed as a result of one of the storms.
Yeah.
So it was allowed to be demoed because it was not safe. They are in the process of rebuilding that porch.
The owners?
The, the owners of the Gray Gulf.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any other questions, members of the board? Hearing none, do we have any questions from, or any comments from the public? Step right up to the mic. Tell us who you are and get to work.
I am Megan Dutcher. I am wondering if.
Megan Dutcher? Thank you.
Are they asking to remove the retail space completely and only do takeout from that space?
Do you want me to answer that?
Yes, please.
The front space, um, the front portion of the building facing the street, as far as we're concerned, is still retail space and cannot be used for anything other than retail space.
Okay. And also, another question is, um, for the fire extinguishers, because now it is being done as takeout and restaurant. They comply with the building code for Fire Department for the, the system that require, the system requirements for that? They have like the, yeah?
I, if you want, they will have to comply with all Board, uh, building and fire. They have to get inspected annually, so that will be part of that, and they need to comply with everything regarding fire and building.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, ma'am, where do you live?
Uh, Harwich.
No, what?
Oh, address, eight thirty-one Queen Anne Road, Harwich.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing none? Oh, we don't have to close any public hearing, it's not a public hearing. Mary?
I'm opposed, so I'm not gonna make the motion.
All right, so.
I think they should have to file a, I just comment, I, I feel that they should file a, a full plan. There's been a lot of problems with, with this facility since they converted it from what it was to what it is today, and I, they have every right to do that, I'm not questioning that question, that issue. But, uh, they've had, uh, a lot of problems with neighbors and, and noise and, uh, so forth and so on. And, uh, so I, I, I just think they should go through the whole plan.
Okay, Charlene?
Um, I understand, um, what Mr. McCarlin is saying. In my opinion, in reviewing the criteria for the triggering of a full site plan review, I don't believe that the changes that have been made since two thousand and twelve trigger that, um, necessity for a full site plan review. The concerns that, that Joe has raised, I'm, I'm not diminishing them at all, but those I do believe belong in a different venue, and that would be before the Board of Selectmen, because the issue.
the issues involve noise and they involve the alcohol.
Well, I don't agree.
I'm just, I'm just, they fall under that.
I don't agree.
If, if, if the Board does not approve the waiver of site plan, the Board is going to need to be very specific as to what in the zoning bylaw the applicant would be applying for, for the purposes of a full site plan review.
I don't agree with that either. I think we can simply require them to, to file a full plan. I don't think we have to give reasons for it. You would need to show me that in the bylaw.
What does the law say?
What I'm saying is, under what provision of a full site plan review would this fall under, based on what the criteria is to trigger a full site plan review?
My position is that I believe they need to make a full site plan, that there needs to be a full site plan submitted because of the history of the operation of this license and, and the complaints that have arisen with respect to it. I understand that that, those are license issues which would, would need to go before the Board of Selectmen. But as far as our jurisdiction, I believe that we should have a, an organized site plan, so we know what's going to be on the premises.
You did receive a site plan prepared by a registered land surveyor and engineer.
I understand.
So I'm just.
I was going to, I was going to mention that the, very importantly, that the owners of the restaurant have gone through, and I hope this addresses some of the concern that perhaps members of the community may have, may have raised with you. Last season, they did go through a very important process with the Board of Selectmen to address some of the elements of use and layout.
And I followed all of that.
Which this actually, exactly, which this actually incorporates, because one of the, one of the considerations was, given, given the various abutters in play, and also a neighboring restaurant as well, and parking area behind, and, and inn next door, not, not, not active inn, but nevertheless, residence or inn next door, that one of the things that they have worked on with the, with the Board of Selectmen on is issues over noise. And I feel like, because I had, had represented them through that process, that a healthy resolution came of it in having certain site visits through the course of the season, together with meeting with the police onsite, which is also planned for this coming season. And in doing so, in recognizing that the layout and the way any, for any, any musician or any use of the space, that it actually is, in this site plan, more private. And also, the direction of, of any entertainment is also toward the rear of the property, or to the southern end of the property, which actually, but it's a part of a parking area for the restaurant next door. So there were some modifications that they took into consideration in preparing this and submitting this and planning for the season. So at least those are some of the things that I've, I've become aware of in working, working with them, that they really are making a very good effort to contain noise activity and also have it, work, work through the channel of the Board of Selectmen's office through the course of the season. So, and that being also planned already for this coming season.
I think what, we.
Go ahead.
I think what we need to consider is that we're now seeing something that we approved, the new structure down between the liquor store and the real estate, couple of doors down, which is going to tighten everything up in, in that section of town. And we haven't got it yet, but I hear.
Obviously, David does, too.
Lost the call-in. Yeah. Okay.
That's the dial tone.
Sending a message.
Hello?
We lost you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't know what happened.
We thought you disagreed, David.
Sorry. Anyway, thanks for calling back.
Okay, you're back. Good.
Good.
Great. So we have, the other consideration is, of course, with, as far as, as far as the, you know, what would otherwise trigger, I think, a site pla, you know, formal site plan review? I think there are a couple of factors that, that we don't have here. One is that there isn't any increase in the use of the space as far as number, as far as seating capacity, or food service, or flow of, flow of pedestrian traffic. And two, that we also don't have any change as far as any egress or ingress to the property. The pathway coming off Route twenty-eight remains the same. There isn't any change to the connectivity between the, the private restaurant space or, or, you know, invitee area and the, and the public sidewalk. So there's no change as far as flow, no change as far as number of patrons at any one point in time and capacity based on the ABCC. So some of the other factors that we sometimes see for a formal site plan to be triggered, I think, are absent currently. But also taking into consideration that, that the, there is a channel for, through the Board of Selectmen's office. I think that is something that I know my clients are very cognizant of, but are actually, actually actively working with, with both the Board of Selectmen's office and also the Police Department, as other merchants and restaurant owners have to do. So.
Well, I mean, I, I'm not opposed to the, I'm a patron.
Sure. Oh, no, thank you. Thank you. Yeah.
But, but I, it, the way it's laid out and its proximity to the premises that we were just talking about where the porch just fell down, and, and its proximity to which you don't see in this plan, but to the rear.
Sure.
Where they've had a variety, as you well know, a variety of complaints. And the fact that we now have that, and again, nothing that has, this is nothing far against your client, we now have that new structure down below, which doesn't have a heck of a lot of parking. It has exactly the number of spaces it needs, and ought to be able to build it. I just think that that section of our community is beginning to, to close in. I mean, people, frankly, most of your people, your patrons, park across the street in the public parking lot, I assume.
Usually the municipal lot.
That's what I'm saying. Yeah, yeah. And the same is true of the folks that are going to be using the business premises of the new building that's going up, best way I can describe it is beside the liquor store.
Sure.
And what I'm saying is, they have, because we approved it, they have sufficient parking, like one space for each of the structures that are in there. But all of the patrons and people who are going to go there and, and use those business premises are going to have to park over in the municipal parking lot also. So I just think that section of town is getting congested, and, and I just think we need to have it clearly laid out. I'm done. Yeah.
Mary?
If I may, I just, I have to disagree with my brother, because there, I think you actually made case for them. They already have the seating. They're not expanding their seating. And they're already in there. So, so there isn't, there isn't, they're not, nothing that they're proposing is increasing the traffic flow that's going in necessarily, because they have that number of seats already approved. It's already been approved on a, on a liquor license application as well, through the Board of Selectmen and through ABCC. So in that circumstance, I can understand where Charlene's coming from in saying that a waiver of site plan is appropriate in this point, because they're, they're not expanding.
Yeah, we'll agree to disagree, Mary.
Disagree. Understood.
Okay, having said that, we're a victim of our own success. Mary?
I move to approve, to approve and adopt the following findings of fact. One, the parcels are in the C-V zoning district. Two, the application does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site and to the abutting properties. Three, there will be minimum, minimal change to the building coverage and site coverage. And four, there will be limited impact on other existing uses of the site.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call, we'll call for a vote. David?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joseph?
Nay.
Nay.
Nay. Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
A vote aye, it's carried. Five to, four, five to one.
And a motion to approve a waiver of site plan for case number PB two zero one eight dash eleven for Taylor Powell DBA perks. As applicant, five forty-five Main Street RT. As owner, a waiver of site plan pursuant to Section three twenty-five dash fifty-five dot F for exterior expansion of the restaurant, fast food slash takeout use for property located at five forty-five Route twenty-eight, map fourteen, parcel U eight, in the C-dash V zoning district, based on the findings of fact above, and that the fact that the proposal does not substantially change the relationship of the structure to the site or to the abutting properties and structures in the application meet the necessary requirements and criteria for approval.
Second.
Ooh, Dave beat you.
It's been moved by Mary and seconded by David. Any discussion? All in favor? Oh, David?
David, yeah.
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Joe?
No.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
A vote ayes, carried five to one. We done?
I think we're done.
I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Keep it quiet.
Let's see. Next. Charlene, thank you very much for forwarding along. I copied the note from the Building Department.
Oh, you're very welcome. Yep.
Next. On the agenda tonight, advisory opinions, Historic District and Historical Commission, four eighteen eighteen, the Board of Appeals and the Board of Appeals. Historic District and Historical Commission, four eighteen. You've got that?
Oh, it's on the back. It's on the back.
In the back of the.
There are three notices.
Oh, okay, the double-sided.
Yeah. The Board indicated that they'd like to see applica, you know, notices as they come in. I honestly didn't see anything that jumped out at me on these.
So just as a point of clarification, our, our demo delay bylaw requires any demolition, including a partial demolition to be included on the notice of intent for a building a hundred years of age or older, so.
Okay, that'd be so noted.
Mr. Chairman, I think we should look at this David M. Harris applicant here to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'm going to burn it down.
Is that a motion?
I couldn't let it go by without commenting.
I second that one. As a matter of interest, David, I did check, and your house is still standing.
Oh, my God.
Anybody have any comment on the ZBA agenda, which is two weeks, two weeks away? Hearing none? The next item on the agenda is discussion requiring the marijuana zoning bylaw, and apparently, according to Charlene, you'll brief us on this?
Yeah, just very briefly, I did do a presentation to the Board of Selectmen last night, just trying to run through the different, what each article actually means. I got some kudos on it, that it actually made some sense, so that was good.
It was very good.
I do have it, if anybody wants to see it. The, for, the Board of Selectmen has voted unanimously on each of the articles to, to support them. The Finance Committee has voted to support the bans, has also voted to support the moratorium, but has held off on their vote on the Time, Place, and Manor Special Permit bylaw, as they may be doing an amendment on the floor of town meeting. I don't know what it's going to be or what it's going to entail. I don't know. One of the things, we did meet, several staff members met with Chris this afternoon. We are actually going to each prepare a paragraph for a letter that we, I think at some, we're going to get to the Board of Selectmen. I keep pointing to the audience, because we actually have two folks from the Board here, just saying how, for instance, how this Board held the public hearings and supported unanimously those articles to recommend them to town meeting. Just so people know that there is other support out there for these articles, not just the police and the fire chief, just that, you know, that this means something to a lot of different people for a lot of different reasons. So I'll be preparing my paragraph, just based on what has happened at these meetings, the, the public hearings that the Board has held, and so that's what's coming up.
Charlene, your position would be to, to deny the sale of it?
The, the Planning Board held a public hearing to ban it outright under zoning, and that was unanimously approved by this Board and to recommend it to town meeting. The Board also held a public hearing on an extension of the moratorium from June thirtieth to December thirty-first. That also was supported unanimously by this Board and recommended to the town meeting. And then, in the event that the ban does not pass, the Board, the Board did hold a public hearing on a Time, Place, and Manor bylaw, which would trigger a special permit if somebody wanted to do a retail sale of recreational marijuana. And the Board voted unanimous, unanimously to support that and to recommend that to town meeting.
It's interesting what some other towns are doing.
Oh, yeah.
It is.
Now, another thing, Joe.
In all honesty, just very briefly, I think there is still a lot of confusion that somebody's right to smoke marijuana, as long as they're twenty-one or older, to smoke marijuana in their own home, to grow up to six plants, you know, those kind of things. I think what people are thinking is that we're trying to stop that. That, that's a given. That, that's over and done with. People have the right to smoke marijuana in Massachusetts, to possess marijuana in Massachusetts. And then there's the whole medical marijuana thing. That is what, what we're proposing at town meeting has absolutely nothing to do with that. People can still smoke marijuana.
Your flow diagram lays it all out. I think that was well done.
And Charlene, as usual, we will, we will advertise a public hearing for the night of the town meeting.
I'll, I will post a meeting of the Planning Board.
Okay. We'll open that and keep it open for the meeting if needed.
I do have the presentation. If you want me to run through it very quickly, I'm happy to do that. I do have it as a PowerPoint. It, it's entirely up to you folks.
It's worth, it's worth, just the flow diagram is worth seeing how the decision is taken.
Not a problem.
It's quick, Larry. I promise.
Oh, an early night, anyway. Go ahead, continue on.
So this is the presentation that I did give last night at the Board of Selectmen meeting. As I described to you just now, there are four different articles going before the town meeting. The first, Article thirty-four is the zoning ban. Article thirty-five is the general bylaw ban. Article thirty-six is the extension of the moratorium, and Article thirty-seven is the Time, Place, and Manor Special Permit.
Charlene, why is there a difference between the general bylaw and the others in terms of majority vote versus two-thirds?
Oh, that's wonderful mass general law for you. Zoning amendments require a two-third vote of the town meeting or the town council, and a general bylaw only requires a majority vote. So Article thirty-four and thirty-five are the bans. If they pass, then there would be a ban on retail sale of recreational marijuana. As a kind of belt and suspenders, it has been recommended that we also go for an extension of the moratorium, just to ensure a little bit of cushion over the existing moratorium to allow for Attorney General to do their review, or if something else comes up, if for some reason the Attorney General does not pass and approve the, the, the general bylaw or the zoning bylaw, then the town has the opportunity to go back to town meeting on a special if they so choose. If those two bylaws fail, then retail sale of recreational marijuana, and I'm just going to call it marijuana from now on, would be allowable in all districts with no restrictions, no criteria on July one of two thousand and eighteen. However, if the two articles fail and the moratorium extension passes, then the retail sale of marijuana would be allowable on January one, two thousand and nineteen. If the two articles fail, the, the ban, and the bylaw for the Time, Place, and Manor Special Permit is approved and passed, then it would go into effect July one, two thousand and eighteen. If the moratorium also gets passed. If the moratorium also gets passed and the time, place, and manner bylaw gets passed, then the effective date would be January one, two thousand and nineteen. If Articles thirty-four and thirty-five, the bans, and the time, place, and manner bylaw fail, then retail recreational marijuana would be allowable, again, on July one, two thousand and eighteen. However, if the moratorium extension passes, it would be allowable on January first, two thousand and nineteen. That's very quick. This is- this was in the Selectmen's packet, so if anybody wants to look at it. I'm actually going to be at a meeting that the Chamber is hosting this Thursday, where I'm not going to do the PowerPoint presentation, but I'm going to be giving basically the same, you know, discussion.
You're not asking me on Thursday night to explain this, are you?
You can just sit there and nod. I'm happy to explain this. I actually did prepare for the Chamber a one-page description that basically says the same thing, but without the flow chart.
This is easy.
It's confusing. There's no question about it.
Come on, you're an engineer. Let's go.
So.
I just, as a matter of- Mr. Chairman-
So, that's just the overview.
The best presentation I've heard on this whole thing is from Sergeant Brackett. And I've heard his presentation two or three times.
Yeah, I can't speak to the merits. I can't say yes, vote no on this and vote- I'm not allowed to do that as a staff member and as the town planner. As a police officer, absolutely, they can speak their mind. I have my own views and opinions, but I'm- it's really not appropriate for me to share those.
Well, he tells the story to the no story, I guess, is what it is.
Yeah.
As best as I've- and I've heard his presentation two or three times.
Yep.
Well, he gets paid for it.
Well, that's true, but he's-
You all can get up and speak to the merits of it. I can just speak to the facts and what each bylaw means.
What happens.
And what happens.
So, you just smile about it.
So, the bottom line is, we're not going to speak about that anymore tonight, because you're the only one that understands it.
Actually, Jim understands it now after watching my presentation last night.
I understand it. I mean, thank God for the great General Court.
Yes. Yep.
But having said that, are there any reports from the members? Briefings or reports? David, any reports on the weather in Florida?
We have- we had really delightful rain for about two hours this evening, which was much needed. So, thanks for sending it from our way.
We've had opposite rain.
You're more than enough.
It was cold and icky today.
We had some snowflakes, actually.
Having said that?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I hope you guys get that to the weather trade now before our meeting.
We will.
I hope so, too.
David, there's a motion to adjourn and a second, and if you'd like to discuss it, you can, but that'll be later. David, are you in favor?
I am.
Jim?
I am.
Joe?
Aye.
Mary?
Aye.
Ellen?
Aye.
It's unanimous.